Resolved. Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 139.
Resolution number 139 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation for a heritage area grant in the amount of $500,000 to build on-street ADA-accessible infrastructure along the route of the Kingston Point rail trail in the waterfront.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 140.
Resolution number 140 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, supporting a memorializing resolution for a New York State consolidated funding application filed by Center for Creative Education, Inc.
On the question, Alderman Dawson.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say I'm very happy to see this. CCE has been doing so many things in this community for such a long time that their growth only shows the positivity in the program. And I'm very happy to say that I definitely am glad that we're hopefully going to support this memorializing resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 141.
Resolution number 141 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the Kingston Housing Authority to submit a plan for placement of speed humps at Colonial Gardens and Rondell Gardens.
On the question, Alderman Shabbat.
Thank you. Alderman Davis and myself have been in discussions with the housing authority over the past couple of months about the need for some safety issues in both the projects, given the large amount of children who are playing in the area. I think Alderman Davis and myself have both witnessed very high-volume and high-velocity traffic traveling through both the projects. Downtown especially, people use it as a shortcut to go from the arterial and get around the red light down there. I think it's really needed. We did put in signs a couple of years ago, but that really doesn't seem to slow anyone down. So I would really like to see some speed humps put in both the projects.
Anyone else on the question, Alderman Davis?
Yes, as Alderman Shabbat stated, I would like to commend the new director there, Kathy Maloney, for taking initiative and seeing that and listening to the people, the residents of Colonial Garden and Rondell Garden, and there is a need for the speed hump that is needed there. So I'm all in favor of this. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Alderman Dawson.
I'd like to commend us for Ashley Cassandra, because she's been talking about doing this since last year that I can remember. And she's a resident there, and I want to commend you, Tony, for looking back and looking out for a place that you know very, very well, and the safety of the children and residents in Rondell Gardens. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question? Before I call for the vote, hearing no one else, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 142.
Resolution number 142 of 2017, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, amending one-way street on Post Street.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 143.
Resolution number 143 of 2017, an ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the city of Kingston, New York, repealing handicap parking on Post Street.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We move on to resolution number 144.
Resolution number 144 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to execute the shared services agreement between the city of Kingston and town of Ulster.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 145.
Resolution number 145 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, requesting utilization of $441,440 of fund balance to pay down short-term debt.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 146.
Resolution number 146 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2017 building maintenance budget.
On the question.
This is for the air conditioning.
Alderman Davis.
As we can all see, that this is greatly needed, and as we're all sweating right now in this room, so I am definitely in favor of this.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Hearing no one else, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 147.
Resolution number 147 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, endorsing support for the rare bakery restoration project.
On the question, hearing no debate, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 148.
Resolution number 148 of 2017, resolution of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2017 fire department budget.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, 9-0. We now move on to resolution number 149.
Resolution number 149 of 2017, zoning amendment number 111, ordinance of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending the zoning ordinance to rezone 300 Flatbush Avenue, tax map number 48.74-3-14.1, from RR to R6, and recommending a negative declaration of environmental significance.
Okay, so let me just explain this before you cast your vote. So it came with a negative recommendation. It also is the legal opinion of the city that a three-quarter vote is required, which would mean there would have to be seven aldermen in favor of voting to, in favor of changing the zone. So it came from laws and rules committee with a negative recommendation, so a yes vote will be to deny the zoning change. A no vote will be to allow the zoning change and be in favor of the zoning change. Everybody understand that? Coop, did you hear me okay?
Can you repeat that just one more time?
What's that, one more time? You need seven votes to change the code, or the zoning code. And we need, a yes vote is to deny it. A no vote is in favor of the change. Okay? Everybody got that? Okay, on the question.
On the question.
Alderman Chelges.
Hello. There's an old adage about the nonpartisan nature of local politics. There's no Democratic or Republican way to pave a street. This should be true in our vote tonight about rezoning 300 Flatbush Avenue. The request to rezone the property as a multifamily parcel is purely procedural. By law, by law, the common council is limited to the application before us. There are no other choices tonight. There are important questions about taxes, jobs, development and community that all of us must consider, but this specific vote on rezoning 300 Flatbush is not the proper place for those questions. There are, however, far-reaching consequences to our decision. Before us lies an open and inclusive process or widespread division and potential financial catastrophe. Fortunately, in the recent debates about the Landmark Place proposal, there are certain things everyone has agreed on. Everyone has realized that the Alm's House cannot remain zoned for a single-family residence. The Rockefellers have not knocked on our door asking for a place to live. We all agree that its zoning must be changed. The current zoning of the property is clearly ridiculous. It must be changed no matter who is making the application. Some opponents of RUPCO's plan even agree that the Alm's House should be a multifamily residence of some sort, just not one developed by RUPCO for the population it has targeted. So a yes vote is simple. A yes vote tonight simply allows the planning board to get started on its work with its trained members. The common council is not in the business of deciding the appropriate uses of individual parcels of property, nor should we be. Our job is to set general guidelines for development and community building. This is the purpose of our comprehensive plan, for example. Too many participants in the recent debate are bent on victory for one side or the other. They see everyone involved as being for us or against us, but there is another group who have not been vocal in the debate. They would rather we approach the issue with compassion for one another. Instead of yelling, all this yelling, 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 they want us to ask, what's the best solution to address the concerns of everyone involved? Everyone that is in the city of Kingston, not just the vocal partisans on one side or the other. Instead of seeing landmark place as a zero-sum game where only pro-RUPCO or anti-RUPCO can win, I ask the two sides to step back and consider how the issues involved affect the entire city and all our neighbors. To the neighbors and opponents of Landmark Place, I hope you will look again. You want the property at 300 Flatbush to be placed on the tax rolls. RUPCO's plan does that. You want jobs there. RUPCO will provide jobs both in construction and ongoing service. You want a peaceful neighborhood. The population RUPCO targets will not bother you. And I ask you to look in your hearts. Will you really be happy knowing you've prevented a handful of elderly friends, neighbors and Americans like yourselves, no matter their shortcomings, and some of them brave veterans of our foreign wars, from having a decent home? Will you really be happy knowing some fine people who have fallen on hard times, who are otherwise without loving family and supportive friends, will have no home? Will you really be happy knowing these individuals will require taxpayer funds for housing rather than becoming rent payers and otherwise independent? To RUPCO and its supporters, I hope you will look again. You want to provide housing to frail and low-income seniors. The residents around 300 Flatbush and their allies are good people who have expressed great love for their family and neighbors. You are fighting for social justice. The residents around 300 Flatbush and their allies want to feel secure in their homes. You advocate for the dignity of low-income seniors. The residents around 300 Flatbush and their allies feel you don't respect them. I ask you, are you really being true to your vision for strong, vibrant and diverse communities if you lack sympathy for the neighbors' concerns? Are you really being true to your social justice vision if you gain this project but lose the respect and cooperation of the taxpayers and citizens of Kingston at large? Both sides are made up of good people, loving people, but you have divided into opposing camps and turned that goodness into bitterness, and it doesn't have to be this way. A simple yes vote tonight puts the decision before the planning board, whose members are trained and experienced in such decisions. That's where it should be for proper and careful examination. A yes vote allows for a reset. It allows both sides to proceed with compassion and mutual purpose. A no vote can only be covert. It can only be about something this process is not meant to address, and the consequences of a no vote may well be catastrophic. A no vote may lead to expensive litigation costs, the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars. Take a look at what has happened in Westchester County, where they have lost $25 million, including $8 million in HUD funding. Where will we find that kind of money? To vote no tonight is to walk a tightrope made of dental floss. One end is held up by a pipe dream of significant commercial development; the other end is held up by potentially budget-busting, tax-raising litigation. A no vote seriously threatens to raise the taxes of every single Kingston taxpayer. And for what? To deny a handful of elderly, disabled citizens a safe, humble and respectful home. To vote no is to engage in the bitterness of division. To vote yes is merely to recognize the obvious. The current zoning of 300 Flatbush is nonsense. It must be changed so that appropriate use determined by the marketplace, the property owners, the neighbors, the citizens of Kingston before the planning board can be developed. We must look bravely and compassionately to the future. We must carefully consider how tonight's vote will affect all our citizens, from our struggling young families to our established property owners concerned about their taxes, to our new entrepreneurs looking for support in new ventures, to our established business people who are struggling to make it every day, to single mothers working to meet a mortgage, and to our elderly citizens who have fallen on hard times and ask for our help. Let's not risk losing local control and significant tax revenues. Instead, let's vote yes with an eye to Kingston's continuing growth and positive development. Let's vote yes to give future developers the confidence to know that we fairly judge reasonable zoning requests on their specific and narrow merits. Let's vote yes in this simple and narrow procedure to affirm our faith in our entire community. I will cast a yes vote to rezone 300 Flatbush to save ourselves vast amounts of money, maintain local control, preserve a wonderful community, and let the planning board do its job.
Okay, I just have a comment on your comments. The laws and rules committee sent a committee report not approving the change.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So the vote yes will be to not allow it. So we want, you want people to vote no to allow it, just so we have that clear. I don't want you guys not understanding.
I'm sorry. Should I reread the whole speech?
No, no, you're good. You're good. Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Alderman Carey.
Yeah, I agree. First of all, I don't think a no vote is based on bitterness and division. A yes vote, yes. The new yes vote. No is the new yes. From the beginning, I have stayed true to my belief that this has absolutely nothing to do with the project or anything. To me, it's strictly about the zoning. And I've lived here my entire life, and to me, there are four properties in the city of Kingston. The uptown parking garage, Broadway Commons, the waterfront, and that amazing corner which the Alm's House sits on has four potential gold mines for the city of Kingston. I don't think, the zoning at R6, in my opinion, puts a lid on the potential growth. And I agree, in the short term, it doesn't look like the right thing to do, perhaps. Maybe the business, the economy right now isn't favorable for that, but five years, 10 years, 15, 20 years down the road, when my children and grandchildren are looking at that and there's a lid on what that corner can bring, as opposed to having unlimited potential, I think would be a mistake, and that would be the economically catastrophic traffic, I'm sorry, vote, in my opinion. So that's it. That's all I'll say.
Mr. President, I will vote no on this resolution. Rezoning of that property will enable a very fine organization to take its, to go before the planning board, to work out the details of what I think could be an outstanding project on a piece of property that, to date and in the foreseeable future, has no commercial potential for realization. Thank you. Anyone else on the question, Alderman Shabbat?
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, we've listened to a lot of opinions here in the past several months, a lot of compelling arguments back and forth. I agree with Rennie. We have one question before us tonight, and that is to rezone it or not to rezone it. Everything else will come into play after that. Alderman Carey and myself, I think we have the same kind of vision, but we're coming in from a different angle at it. I don't want my grandchildren to ask me 10 years from now, how come that building's still sitting there crumbling because we didn't change the zoning and nobody else has come forward to do anything with it? Would be nice if we had a crystal ball and we could see the future and know what it's all about. And it is, it's a matter of opinion which way you want to, which way you want to go on this. Rezone it, not rezone it. If we rezone it, something will come in there now. If we don't rezone it, possibly something better later. And I'm not here to extol the virtues of RUPCO. I mean, I think they're a fine organization. They've done some fine work. Unless you think, I'm not familiar with it. I have one, two blocks from my house, a RUPCO project. And it's been, you know, I have had no issues with it whatsoever. It's been nice. They did wonders with the buildings. The residents are nice. It's quiet. That being said, that's the last time I'm going to mention RUPCO, because I really don't think they have anything to do with this. My thought is, you know, this needs to be rezoned. If we don't rezone it, we might as well put a condemn sign on the building right now, because I don't think anybody's going to come forward and buy it without rezoning it. If there's any interest, I'm sure they're going to ask for rezoning at a later date. So yes, I will vote for rezoning.
Alderman Eckert.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to emphasize two points. One is that the Flatbush property is county-owned, and I think that's really been not emphasized enough. The county sold this property, not the city, and I think that residents should rightly, if they're opposed to this project, express their dissatisfaction to the county. The city has absolutely no control over that sale, and I want to emphasize that point. The second point I want to emphasize, which has been said, but I'll just say it in a slightly different way here, is that the issue before the council isn't about the RUPCO project. It's about a zoning classification for the property. And if we don't change the use category from single to multifamily now, we can't do it in the future without threat of a lawsuit. Moreover, that 300 Flatbush Avenue property, the argument that it should be rezoned to commercial status rather than multifamily status runs into two problems. The first is that we have no commercial application before us, and in order to act on that commercial zoning classification, we need to have an application requesting for such a change, and we simply don't. The second problem that argument runs into is that Flatbush Avenue was aggressively marketed for several years to potential commercial buyers by a local, well-respected, commercial real estate company. They marketed the sale of 300 Flatbush Avenue, not just here in the Hudson Valley or in New York State, but all over the country, with no success. The owner of that commercial real estate company came to the laws and rules committee meeting to discuss their marketing campaign for the property and to explain in great detail why commercial developers were not willing to buy and develop the property. Those obstacles to sale involve the very nature of the construction of the property itself, making it incredibly difficult to renovate and modernize the property in a way that would make it profitable. And these concerns aren't going away. So I would like to emphasize tonight that this is a narrow question. It's not appropriate to think about RUPCO or the specifics of the project, but rather the use of the property. So I will be voting in favor of the change. Thank you.
Alderman Carey.
Yeah, just to clarify, I wasn't implying that we would make the zoning change to commercial. I understand we can until we have a project before us. I just wanted to clarify that. I do understand and realize it.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Alderman Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. President. How could I not speak on this? Wow, so many different things have been said here. And it's been said that this doesn't involve RUPCO. It's been said that this is specifically a zoning issue. Well, that's correct. It is a zoning issue that we're voting on. But look at the predicament. Look at the outcomes. Look at the pour-out of support and non-support and whose team you're on. Look at the result of this. It's so messy. It's so very, very messy, because lines have been crossed and things have been said that shouldn't have been said, and I don't want to stand up here and repeat all those things. But I will say this. My mother always told me, "There but by the grace of God go I." It could be me. It could be any one of you in need of assistance, whether that's what's on the table or not. And it scares me to think that the moral issues are being stomped on because of people's own specific opinions or their own issues with whomever or whatever organization. We have to really, really think, I'm going to get old, hopefully not for a long time, but I'm going to get old. We're all going to get old. And God forbid that we don't have a family member or someone that might be in need of some kind of support. So I think we need to be a lot more careful. And what morally are we doing by picking sides? We're willing to be so nasty about this that we're willing to say, forget the zoning issue, because that is really where we're at. We're willing to stop this zoning issue, the possibility of any further action coming forth, because we change zones all the time to accommodate projects, all the time. So we're going to say no to this and yes to others? Where are we at? Really, where are we at? And I have to say, RUPCO has done beautiful things, and it doesn't matter if my opinion sways this or not, but I'm okay to speak about it, and I'm okay for those that speak against it. That's your opinion. You have every right to it. But if it helps an underprivileged person, I'm always reaching back. I never forget where I came from, and I'm never going to forget where I came from. Many of us need to look at it, whether you came from there or not, because there but by the grace of God go I. It could be me. It could be you. So I'm definitely for this zoning change, because I don't want to stifle us as a walkable community, as a community where people are coming, moving up here, liking what we have. We're going to change the game in many ways, just from this one topic right here. So that's all I have to say.
Alderman Mills.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say, let's keep in mind, be mindful of the issue at hand, and that is zoning. And let's keep in mind why the resolution in the committee was tabled, and that was based on the comprehensive plan, and that there's a zoning committee, subcommittee of the comprehensive plan that has been meeting for years now. And it began again last week that there was a zoning meeting, and it was also noted that the Montgomery case was quoted in regard to zoning. And they too were going through a zoning change at that time, and their information was tabled until their zoning was completed. And while the outcome remained the same, they did their due diligence, completed their zoning of their comprehensive plan, and that is what we need to do here. And this would avoid problems of, do we have an R6? Do we have a C123? Do we have a commercial and a residential? I live in a commercial and residential area, and many of us do and many of us don't. But those zones need to be looked at, and once they're looked at, let's move this along. Don't wait till 2018 to get our zoning done. Do it now, and then we can address every issue at hand that comes up to the planning board, who directed this request to the common council for the zoning, and our zoning committee as well. And then there won't be problems of zoning, because we'll have it on the books, what we should be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Dawson.
I'm sorry. I'd just like to say, if zoning is really the issue, is this, there's a lot of games and tactics to delay this. If we did this for every project that was actually on the table, I don't know if there's a personal thing going on with RUPCO. I don't have issues with RUPCO. I take things on face value. But if we're doing this as a tactic to stall this, shame on us. Seriously, shame on us. Thank you very much. Be my guest.
I just want to follow up to Alderman Dawson's comments. Again, the issue at hand, which we, as a council, have been told, we can only speak to zoning. We cannot speak to what the project is about or who the project is about. And I will just say, I am not against who the project is about. I can tell you, I've worked with RUPCO. I worked for United Healthcare, and I was a lone executive with United Way, and I worked with RUPCO during that, and I will continue to do my community service for not-for-profits and for volunteerism throughout this community.
and for volunteerism throughout this community. It's about the zoning, and those zoning information was given to the entire council, and it was researched, and we need to look at the zoning. If we stop and tabled and keep it at that, that means nothing else could be zoned, so let's move it up, because I think we need to get our zoning in place and work for the city as a whole.
Alderman Childers.
Change the zoning tonight by...
No. Will not. No. Sorry. Sorry.
Changing the zoning tonight by voting no...
Will not. Will not preclude changing the zoning in the future.
So the problem is that not changing the zoning tonight raises all kinds of problems for changing the zoning in the future. That's why it's imperative to vote no on this particular issue, so that we can change the zoning and free that property up to be development. It's completely possible that, when it goes before the planning board, the planning board will find that Rupco's project is not appropriate, not viable. Rupco may decide to change their minds for some reason. That will still allow us to change if another entity comes in and says, we want to buy that property and change that. Still change the zoning at a later point, but I believe...
Anyone else? Alderman Brown.
I'm just going to say one sentence, and I'm going to read it. Everything about this process defies democracy. At no point were the people involved in this publicly owned asset and process. Thank you.
Anyone else on the question before I call for the vote? Seeing no one, I'm just going to reiterate, a yes vote will be to deny 300 Flatbush Avenue zoning change from RR to R6. A vote no will be to allow 300 Flatbush Avenue from RR to R6. Okay? All in favor?
Yes. Yes, all, yes. Good point.
All voting yes? Or all voting no? It is five no's and four yeses, and that means there was five in favor and four opposed, so the resolution is defeated. I take that back. The resolution, the committee report, is upheld. Well, just so you know, the resolution was actually obtained or was approved for the five, because the other side needed seven. Okay. I know, it's a little confusing, but we have this rule that even negative recommendations from committees come to the floor, so it comes at the negative. The change to the zoning has not been approved per legal counsel. Thank you very much. Okay, we now move on to...
Second reading of local laws.
Second reading and vote of local law number four.
What? We've... You don't have local law four?
We have five, six, seven.
She'll read it to you, and you might...
Yeah, you had them last month, but... Local law four of 2017 at the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending section 332-1 of the code of the city of Kingston. This is, it's related to rental properties.
We do have...
Yeah, it was from last month, first reading.
First reading was last month.
No, I got it. It says, date equal 28, 2017, amendment equal 333. I got the standard one.
Yeah, because we're voting on it tonight.
Yeah, that's why I went ahead and made it up.
But that's, I said we would see it.
Oh. I think it's just, yeah, the local law wasn't on top of the communication list.
Yeah. Oh, here it is.
Okay, everybody good?
Yeah.
I did. Okay.
On the question...
I'm just checking.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted. Local law is adopted, nine-zero. We now move on to local law number five.
Local law five of 2017 at the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, amending section 355 of the code of the city of Kingston.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Local law is adopted, nine-zero. We now move on to local law number six.
Local law six of 2017 of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, adding chapter 374 Trees Street to the code of the city of Kingston.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Local law is adopted, nine-zero. We now move on to local law number seven.
Local law seven of 2017 of the common council of the city of Kingston, New York, adding chapter 358 Sidewalk Standards to the code of the city of Kingston.
On the question, hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is adopted, nine-zero. That concludes the local laws and committees for this evening.
President Noble.
Alderman Mills.
I'd like to end in memory of a few people this evening. Two who are from, well, one from Ward Seven, which was Joe Messier. He was a lifelong resident of the ward, and at one time Frank Kishara, who was also a resident of the ward, and also Mary DeSico, who now resides, or who did reside in Florida. She was the former Kingston Housing Authority Secretary for many years, and I just wanted to leave this meeting on behalf of these three people. Thank you.
Anyone else before I, okay, Alderman Dawson.
Mr. President, I'd like to close this meeting in honor of someone from Ward's Marion's, Ward, Ward Seven, Mr. Jimmy Mills. Mr. Jimmy Mills, I don't know too many specifics, only what I actually know from my friend, who was his niece, Selena. Mr. Mills, I know, worked many years in the city of Kingston. He's very well-known in the ward. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. He worked for the Brown Company, UPS, for many, many years, and he was a very, very kind man, very charismatic man, and he was a focal part in the community for many years. And he'll be missed, and I know he died recently suddenly. He'll definitely be missed. He owned a very, very nice nightclub in Poughkeepsie, too. I remember that. So, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Davis.
I would like to close in memory of Ann Greaney Reister, who passed away on June 13, 2017. I spent many days, weekends, at the house with Mrs. Reister and the whole entire family. She leaves behind her husband of 62 years, Don Reister, and her children, Margaret Seeger and her husband Fred, David Reister and his wife Carla, Patty Jordan and her husband Brad, John Reister and his wife Patty, Billy Reister and his wife Sean, and Ann Reister and her husband Don, and Nancy DiRella. And Mrs. Reister was a kind and passionate lady. She was always attentive on a regular basis until she got sick in Mass at St. Joseph's Church, and she also had a love for knitting, which ties her to the city, because she held instructional and classes at their Kingston Andy Murphy Center, I should call it now. So I would like to end with that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Shabbat.
Yes, I'd like to close in memory of Frank Lent. Actually, I just found out a couple days ago, he actually died Christmas Day. Mr. Lent was a longtime resident, not born here, a local bon vivant, shall we say. He played a lot of local taverns. He was a guitar player, country and western swing. He made some television appearances with Peg Leg Bates, worked at many of the hotels, including Eleven Main, for a long time. Just a real, real nice gentleman, funny guy. I'm going to be really sorry not to see him anymore.
Anyone else before I call for a vote to adjourn? Seeing no one else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are hereby adjourned until the next regular scheduled meeting. Thank you very much.